...to order it is, I think, minutes after seven on the seventh. We'll stand for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the quiet of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Angela, verification of the meeting posting of the minutes. Are there the minutes and the agenda?
The me- the agenda was posted on December 2nd by four thirty PM at City Hall State Bank of Arcadia, Arcadia TV and Appliance and the city website.
Thank you. Something new that I'm gonna add on here is an approval of the agenda. All the council members have had the agenda since last Wednesday as well. And I have in motion to approve the agenda. Can we change? Yeah, first you need a motion to approve it and then second and then can we make any changes?
I saw need to approve the agenda.
Set a second. Motion and a second. Any changes?
A suggestion would be, I don't know if Mr. Whalen wants to, for parliamentary procedure, would like, can we move that up either?
You thinking in front of old business?
Yeah, so that he doesn't have to stay stick around for...
Sure, could we put him like after the minute, minutes?
Yeah.
Or approve or break?
Alright.
Roll call?
Yep.
Sorry.
Would you motion on that or?
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have a roll call first, I apologize. Angela, you gotta catch me on that.
Okay, well, I didn't catch you. Um, Fatch.
Yeah, yeah.
Woodney? Colson? Yes. Conrad?
Present.
Sinsalad?
Yeah.
Feltes?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Conrad. Now we can keep moving with the, uh, changing, very kind of, right there. What do you want? Now you wanna move it after the minutes?
Yeah, or earlier in the, in the program here so that he doesn't have to, uh...
Anybody see a problem with that? Hearing down all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of council minutes from November 2nd, November 5th, November 16th, November 17th, November 19th. So, motion by Mr. Feltes and a second by Mr. Conrad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries?
I need to abstain on, on November 19th, I was not at that meeting. But I would need to approve all of them except for 19th, which I need to abstain on because of not being here.
All of them at once? That's something else that we're gonna try over the minutes from each meeting approved, so we're not approving five meetings all at once.
I'd like to vote though that, uh, you know, to go through the names and everything.
Shouldn't have to, in this meeting.
No, there isn't that many of us.
Alright, so we will, I guess we'll, we can, I'll entertain a motion on the November 19th one, um, to approve.
So.
Second. And a second. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Oh.
And the rest are already approved.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, who made the motion and seconded I was?
Mr. Conrad and Mr. Feltes.
Okay.
Mr. Kevin Whalen is here to do a presentation on parliamentary procedure. This was brought by the previous, um, mayor and it was kind of spirited by Mr. Fatch. Mr. Whalen, the floor is yours.
Alright, thank you. It brings back a lot of good memories for the fact that, uh, back when I first got here, uh, Gene Killian hadn't come down here quite a few times. And the reason Gene hadn't come down was actually it involved Arcadia High School students in the city council. And they moved motions, went through and it was very formal and I was very impressed. They gave a, uh, good side to the students as far as to see how parliamentary procedure was actually in action here in Arcadia. Uh, real impressed with this area as far as how well they follow the rules as far as meetings. Uh, I do have to tell you, uh, the advantage I had when Gene was, was, uh, mayor was I was, uh, gonna marry one of his cousins. So, we never got thrown out of the meeting, so they kinda let us do what we needed to. Uh, we had students moving motions on the board. We would try to do, uh, city activities and we'd need approval by the city council and the high school students would have to move the motion, go through it, then we brought the team down. Uh, for those of you who don't know, we have Kevin Whalen, Hager Science instructor up at Arcadia High School, been there for quite a while. And I worked with competitive parliamentary law teams. I got a really good one right now, which is a lot of the good students that you guys might go. Uh, but I was blessed with the fact that Mel Nelson when I moved here had trained a very top quality team. And with that team, they taught me a lot and we were able to learn a lot just by the fact we get involved in meetings. Uh, you guys got an advantage too, cause, uh, the town board had a caucus and I probably saw one of the best, uh, conducted Harley Pro that I've ever seen by the temporary chairman that came in. And those people that weren't there, large crowd, I can't tell you how many, uh, filled the building a couple times over. Um, I think we stood, yeah, I'm sure we stood, long meeting. In case you wanted to go to a short meeting too, have the guest speaker stand and for FFA meeting, we always have the chairman stand. The meetings are much shorter when the chairman have to stand. And not gonna hint that, ah, but that's just, that's a technique we've used for thirty years and it works very well. After a while, the chairman's pushing people really quick to get them going, cause you can only stand for so long as far as in some of those basic meetings. The guy who ran that meeting, uh, I believe was Mike Cuskey?
Yeah.
And did an outstanding job and he kinda got into Harley Pro the same way I did. Um, I think his mom asked him to do it. And for me, it was my older brother. I was an officer back in seventy-nine parliamentarian, so I had to end up doing a lot of parliamentary procedure. And with it, I made a lot of mistakes as a sophomore in high school. And my brother was a senior and he was the quarterback and he was the captain of the football team. And when we screwed up Harley Pro, it was my mistake. So I learned Harley Pro real well from a young age just cause of the peer pressure part of it. When a senior tells you to make sure it's right, you definitely would go through and make sure it's right. Uh, other things that are advantages that you guys got, you got good attendance in meetings. I've worked with some groups where their biggest challenge is to get people here. And you guys got the advantage of hey, there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of people that wanna come in, there's a lot of people, a lot of people that wanna get involved. So that really carries a lot of weight as far as when you're working with the groups. Uh, with it, Harley Pro is not difficult, you guys know that. You guys already have your agenda put together, that's half of it. You've got your committees all put together. Um, big thing that you wanna get started in is there's four basic rules you always gotta follow. And everything that we talk about, uh, is based on Robert's Rules of Order. And if you think it's a guy named Robert, you're half right. His last name is Robert. He's the guy who put together the whole set of rules. But they're really based on the House Representatives and how they conducted materials, which of course was based on how the parliament in England started handling, which was based of course on, uh, goes all the way back to the Anglo-Saxons, how they did it and the Romans and stuff. But there's a lot of logic to it. Four basic rules. First one of course, you guys all know is majority rules. So anytime that you've got, anything that comes up, it's always the majority that rules. So when people go through, it's important to know your attendance, it's important to know how many members we've got as far as you're here. Advantage of course with city council, you guys, you always have people that are assigned to be different areas that you're representing and you're also as far as you have good attendance. Second basic rule of course is the rights of minority. Even though the minor- the majority rules, the minority always has specific rights. They always get to have their say. So if you're looking at those two basics, those carry an awful lot of weight with Harley Pro. The, uh, other additional ones are one thing at a time. And that's what I screwed up back when I was in high school, was the one thing at a time. So if you have a motion on the floor, you have to address that motion, like when you brought that up Rob, as far as specifically, oh, we have to take care of this in order and this in order. That's a real key. Otherwise, the person that's taking the minutes, which to have a meeting, you basically only need a chairman and someone recording the minute, somebody who reports. That can be an official meeting unless your bylaw says it has to be a form, which I'm not sure. I was looking into the city bylaws, that's something you guys might wanna address as far as conduct that you wanna have for your meeting. Uh, there's a lot of people that wanna just do it the casual way, nothing formal. Uh, I learned a long time ago that usually cause some hard feelings. Uh, you do have to have some rules that are followed. Uh, good example is one of the students I brought down to the city council, Pat Ruder ing. Uh, I believe he had to move a motion that we needed to purchase a liquor license for a horse pole. That was a different year, just so you know, back for the, we wouldn't try that one right now. But with that one, um, he was able to propose that. When he went to the university at La Crosse, he became president of, of a fraternity, they had four and a half hour meetings. And the reason they had four and a half hour meetings is because they wanted to be casual, no strict rules. But with no strict rules, there was no guidelines on what you were supposed to do. Alright, so they didn't have a set of agenda, they wandered, they didn't follow through and get the work done in a timely manner. You do definitely wanna make sure you're doing one thing at a time and you're prioritizing what needs to be done. So majority rules, rights of minority, the third item we said, one thing at a time, and the fourth one's really critical, and that's courtesy to everybody. If you're in a meeting and the guest speaker's talking too long, which if you guys want me to be quiet, just go like this, I'll sit down pretty quick. Alright, so that you know. But with, with courtesy to everyone, that means when people are speaking, there's formal ways that you can interrupt a speaker, but you've gotta make sure you do it in a proper manner. Alright, and it's not to be rude, uh, there's a lot of courtesy that comes with what we call the salient foot. Alright, interrupting a speaker is something that is legal sometimes in parliamentary procedure, but only in appropriate types. Once you have the chairman, which congratulation on your election, Rob, the chairman gets to control the meeting, but there's things that the chairman is regulated on doing. You know, he has to recognize and give the floor to a individual as far as at the meeting. So when they're giving the meeting over, there's things that you as far as if you've been recognized, uh, that you have responsibilities in the specific, specific meeting. So those four basics are what rule what's going on. Um, then get a little bit, uh, more interesting as far as how everything is right. The way that we've got it set up that we use it, most of the meetings I've worked with is Robert's Rule of Order. For those that wonder where it came from, uh, HM, Robert was the guy's name, he, uh, got elected to a church council meeting, he was a brigadier general in the US Army. He got elected to a church council meeting and he didn't wanna take anybody off, specifically the church elders. But he wanted them to know what was going on. So he put in a book, uh, that he wrote, eighteen seventy-six, called Robert's Rule of Order, all the materials on how to actually run the meeting. And with that, there is a hierarchy of what you can do at different times. Basically, he tipped the two types of motions. And when you get looking at them, there's two specific types. You can either have ranking motions or non-ranking motions. The ranking motions have one specific motion that gets most of the work done. That's a main motion. It's the lowest ranking, but it's the one that gets everything completed. So if you're sitting at a meeting here, you guys all, I moved that week, that's a main motion, after you've been recognized by the chair. So with a main motion, then the hierarchy goes above the main motions, you've got what we call the subsidiary motions. Above the subsidiary motions are those motions in a meeting that make a higher level of comfort. Those are called the privileges motion. Now, I'm not exactly sure how deep you guys wanna get tonight, but I gladly brought all the material, cause you know, teachers, we always prepare as much as humanly possible just so we have the material. Uh, with it, since you guys already have an agenda, we get to throw out the regular meeting agendas, that's done. Rules of debate, we probably will take a look at. Meetings versus sessions, you guys got that handled already. Uh, specifics as far as handling a motion, the steps, that main motion we talked about as far as an individual moving the motion, seconding the motion, the stair, the chair restates the motion again. So when something comes up, you restate it and who seconded it. Then it makes it very easy for the recorder to actually go through and do that. I know it's formal, it's repetitive, but it's really effective as far as for meetings. Cause there's always somebody in the back that didn't hear, hey, who moved that motion? So that worked really good, you illustrated that well as far as the material. Then they have with that main motion, they have the debate. Now, the person that moves the motion of course gets to make the first debate. And they usually would state whether they're in favor of the motion or in opposition. The second person for any main motion should always be somebody that's an opponent. Now how the chairman decides that, you know, that's your call as far as, uh, when you're looking at it, because you wanna have both views stated immediately. So if you're being the chair, you're gonna say, okay, the motion was made by Mr. Conrad, was seconded by Mr. Feltes. You wouldn't call on Mr. Feltes for the second debate, cause you already know he's in favor of it. But you would call on somebody that's in opposition. And that works real well as far as being able to get everybody's viewpoint put up. And it's a real effective way to do it. Um, then before you go through the, uh, to vote on the main motion, you restate the motion, make sure that everybody's got a chance to hear it and understand what's going on. Then you go to the vote. Now you guys do mostly roll call votes or what's your standard operation?
I think it was mostly roll call, yes.
Right, and that's mostly just to be documented, which is a great way to document it. And some of our casual setting will do a voice vote, uh, do another form of mechanical vote, the raising of the hand, the standing up, those are specific ways to do it. Um, we do secret ballot and that's only specific to the elections and some of those types. And those are the main ways that you guys probably are gonna be able to do it. You probably are bound by some of your regulations that you have to have a roll call, I suspect.
Certainties, yes.
Right, and that's one thing you guys probably wanna do is define that. Um, keeps people from being offended by thinking that there's, uh, something that's shady going on. Questions, Fatch?
Yeah, uh, in order for debate of a motion, don't you have to have a second?
You have to have a second, somebody else that agrees to it. So like we were discussing, uh, a lot of time with meetings, you can make meetings move extremely effective if your standing committees are the ones that actually go through and second the main motion. So like when we set up our meetings, we always have our standing committees and then we'll have our ad hoc committees. And I'm not sure as far as your guys' procedure, do you have some standing committees already that are conducting?
Yes.
And three people on, or how do you guys try to do it?
I believe there's three.
Yep, and that's an excellent way to do it. Yeah, because that way you can go through and make sure you have support, cause if you bad the committee meeting, if two people on the committee don't support it, then there's no reason to have it come up at the meeting. And it can be put on the agenda, but it won't be a main motion. And a lot of people try to discuss the motion before it's been properly made as a main motion. Even if the committee report, we'll always have our committees do the job of moving the motion, speeds the meeting up. If you feel strongly about it enough with the meeting, you try to get that motion to be brought forward.
And second.
And the second. And you can't debate it until the second hits.
That's right.
You cannot debate anything until there's somebody else that agrees on it. And you'll see, the chairman most of the time will say, motion dies for lack of a second. And if you have nobody else that agrees it, there's no sense discussing it. Now there's techniques that you can actually control it to make sure that, that it isn't discussed. And those would be some incidental motions. And I'll tell you about them just in case somebody tries to bring them up for the meeting. I'll explain a little bit about a gentleman named Robert Lambert, Bob Lambert. And he was our parliamentarian back in ninety-two. I know Marley's is laughing because didn't seem to be the Harley Pro type when he was actually at it. He was part of our Harley Pro team. And, uh, you, I'll digress a little bit just cause it's a great story. Um, for our FFA week activities, we were gonna have the sumo wrestlers where they blow up the dolls and they put people in it and they wrestle sumo and they run out there and we thought that'd be a great activity for FFA week in front of the three hundred people at Arcadia High School. Bob was a serious wrestler and he thought that was a dig on every wrestler in Arcadia. He didn't wanna have anything come up on that item. So what Bob did is he helped put together the agenda, put that as the last motion as far as for the meeting. With the last motion, he knew Harley Pro very well. They went up, they debated it. What he did automatically was he, after the motion was made and seconded, he moved to table it. Well, if you know you're Harley Pro, you realize after everybody said, aye, we table it, once the motion was tabled, this was in a February twelfth meeting, FFA week was the following meeting, you have to have another motion before you can bring it back above the table again. And so he effectively killed the motion with the motion of table. And some people might say that's stereotypical, I thought it was brilliant. Um, if somebody's that intelligent in meeting, you also can object to the consideration of the question. But that has to be done before the second has been made. So if somebody stands up and says that they wanna dissolve, uh, motion to dissolve the city council and it totally offends everybody, then all you have to do is have someone object to the consideration of the question. If it passes with a majority vote, then, or excuse me, a two-thirds majority vote, then it's not even brought up. But we can get into, would you guys like to get into some of those specific techniques like that? I can give you the sheet, tell you when you use, what you use, tell you that information. Because to me, that's kinda what the, the advantage to being here is the fact that you can actually understand how a meeting runs specific to that level.
Kevin, a question before you can give the app, you threw the agenda, the papers down there.
Yep.
Uh, I know we have an agenda, but who sets the agenda?
The chairman always sets the agenda. Chairman in cooperation with the secretary or recorder of the meeting.
With the, uh, suggestions of the...
Totally open, if, you know, if you have a chairman that's got two ears and one mouth, that looks really good, that he listens to what goes on there. You know, that's probably the key to the whole thing, is that the agenda is set and if you have to post it, you know, you can try to make sure that it was actually included. Um, basically what I brought was identical to what you guys use, so that's why I didn't pass it around. Um, the big thing that they included was reading of the treasury, special committee reports, um, specifics. They put the program on the bottom, so I guess I view the program, I'm professional, but you moved me to the top, it changed everything, I usually, that's the end of it, so we get all the business, the important stuff done first. But if you guys want copies of this, I can leave you some of these copies. Basically, these are everything from Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, was updated, we use the, uh, two thousand eleven edition, which is the eleventh edition, and that's current as to right now. Uh, some of the material you were covering, they were trying to always be current. Uh, if you're interested and you don't wanna buy the six hundred and ninety-nine page Robert's Rule of Order from the eleventh edition, two thousand five, they have a small booklet on use of it. And then if you're not, uh, one that gets too, uh, stressed about it, they also have Harley Pro for dummies too, if you wanna buy that. And I, I actually use that with my students sometimes, cause then if you graduate up to Robert's Court after they got on the Harley Pro for dummies. Okay, basically what this is, and I'll give you guys each a copy of this, this is the ranking and non-ranking motions of parliamentary procedure. It's excellent as far as if you want a single view to take and look at it. Privilege motions, the highest ranking is called to fix the time to which to adjourn in case you had someone here that wasn't gonna be able to be here till the end of the meeting or didn't wanna have anything happen at the meeting where they weren't present. That's the highest ranking motion is to fix the time to which to adjourn. So that when there's a meeting going on, when that meeting's adjourned, they already know when the next meeting's gonna be. That's what that specific motion would be. So you wouldn't miss a meeting because you were here and the meeting got adjourned and nobody told you when the secret meeting is. That's how it's set up. So everybody's available with that. Second highest ranking motion of course is to adjourn. Uh, at any time, a motion to adjourn can come up. And for those of you that have sat in those long meetings, there's a reason for that. Because, uh, we lose our effectiveness after a certain while as far as with meetings. Meeting's only effective as the people that are participating. So adjourn is the second highest. So when you have the adjournment going on, that gives everybody a chance to know that, hey, we, it's one thirty in the morning, nobody's getting any work done, we're gonna go to adjourn it. There's other things that have to be taken care of of course, if you do adjourn, but that is the highest, one of the highest ranking. Third highest ranking is for people that are getting uncomfortable with the meeting, take your recess. Now with each one of these, there are the salience that you have to record, the salient points. First one was that second that came up. The second salient point is whether you can debate it or not. So as you can see, most of the privilege motions cannot be debated in any way, shape or form. It's usually responsible either to the vote or the decision of the chair. So take your recess, you can't debate whether you're gonna take your recess, you vote on it immediately. Can you interrupt a speaker? No, not for recess. The floor has to be open if you wanna move for recess. Um, if you have something specific to yourself, for example, we were talking about the heater that's in the room. If it gets too warm during a meeting, yes, you can interrupt the meeting to get the meeting room so it's right. And all that is, is to rise to a question of privilege and the chairman makes the call on that. So if you're sitting in the back of the room, people keep opening the door, it's getting too cold, you need the heater on, rise to a question of privilege would be what you'd call, you'd ask Rob, hey, we need the heater turned up. All he does is make a call, ye are and eh, and appropriate action is taken. So those are ones that people don't use real effectively. They can make the meetings a lot more enjoyable as far as because they're privileged motion. But if people are getting lost as far as the meeting, and let's say you have a guest speaker that's talking way longer than he should, or if you have other agenda items to get on, you would just call specifically the orders of the day. And what happens when the orders of the day are called, then the chairman goes back to the recorder or the clerk and says, what are we supposed to be working on? It's repeated and then the motion is brought forward that way. So the privilege motions are all to get things done as far as for members, individual members. Questions and all on those privileges. The only ones that can interrupt that are privileged motions, question of privilege and orders of the day. And it just gets the meeting done. So if you look at those privileged ones, those are the top ones. Um, and with the other material, if you guys, I don't have enough for the whole crowd, but if anybody's interested, I've got some additional ones here that all lay up here, would you like one? Um, beyond that, for the ranking motions, the next ones are the subsidiary motions. You drop down, you can see the incidental motions, they come up at any time during the debate, those incidentals. The subsidiary motions are the other ranking motions and those are, are basically put onto a main motion to accomplish whatever job you have to get done. Including, for example, the main one you see is to amend. You wanna change something, not the entire idea of the motion. You cannot make a motion change and do a one eighty. If you said that we are going to go through and move to, uh, reduce, uh, a property assessment, you can't strike the word reduce and put the word increase, it has to be a separate motion. You can't totally change the effect of the main motion. You can amend it and you can amend an amendment, but you have to vote on the amendment to the amendment first, then vote on the amendment, then act the main motion. So specifically, um, if you guys are looking at the chart, there'll be, most of it's a clear yes or no. In addition to it, there are specific treatments, those are what the numbers are. And those are on the second page for those people that have that packet. And that gives you an idea of what you could actually go through and if something is specific to, uh, sometimes you have to have unanimous consent, sometimes you have to have a majority vote, those are all the stuff specifically out here.
Question?
Go ahead, Dr. Fatch.
On the, uh, who makes the amendment to the motion?
The amendment?
Who can, who can make an amendment?
The amendment has to be somebody that has, it's gotta be germane to the motion, meaning it's gotta be related to what the motion is. And it's gotta be somebody that, um, they can be somebody who spoke against the motion to begin with, because they didn't like the way it originally was put together. So it doesn't have to be somebody that was in favor of the motion.
But it's not the person who made the, uh, the motion?
You can amend it. They can amend it and change it, because they find out some additional material.
Right, after discussion?
Yeah, we were discussing it and found out that the reason why we wanna have a holiday parade, um, you know, we, we, we know our, now our, our liability, uh, insurance, uh, was reduced because we've gone so long without having an accident, um, they're able to amend the motion, uh, to say that, yeah, we're gonna run the whole length of Arcadia with a holiday parade. And that's one thing that comes up. Or it can be that we're gonna put Christmas trees down the Trumbull River, light it up, you know, so that as far as the holiday cheer goes, not only up and down the main street, but down the river too. So those things can be changed if something comes up in the debate. You can amend your own amendment. Um, you can't withdraw the main motion if it's been amended. So if you were the maker of the main motion and somebody's amended, you can't withdraw it, no. What, uh, sometimes they do is informal withdrawals, where you say, I move to withdraw my motion, What, uh, sometimes they do is informal withdrawals, where you say, I move to withdraw my motion, as long as nobody objects, it's okay. But if it's been amended, you can't do that. Once it's, it's lost your signature as far as...
So you let on the amendment, then you vote on the motion as amended?
Yes, that's specific. And a lot of times the amendments will be defeated, and there'll be, you know, some other amendments that come up. Now with this material, we do have a parliamentary procedure team at the high school that goes through and demonstrates these. And I did offer that to the city council. If you say, hey, give us these five, show us how these work, and we can have the high schools go through and they'll demonstrate them, because they've been practicing these, we would go through. If you know of something that's on there that, hey, we could've used that last meeting. A lot of people like to postpone to a certain time, but there's specifics to that. There's specifics to a lot of when you can use those motions, just like the object to the consideration with question. And then the ones that are probably most difficult, you guys can see on there, is that brings items back before the assembly again. There's specific rules to take from the table. Like I told you, with Bob Lambert's situation, you have to have another motion before you can vote on it again. Those are on the bottom. And those are things that you've got to look at, reconsider, reconsider and enter into the minutes, rescind and ratify. Those are probably the most challenging motions spring up at a meeting. So if you're looking at it, those are probably what you need to background, and they're a little bit more difficult to work with, some of those parliamentary motions. The subsidiary are pretty clear cut. Incidentals are, the biggest one I always like to teach everybody, is if somebody makes a mistake, how do you correct them? Anybody have a clue at a meeting? If you're polite about it, you don't yell and throw things at them. It's not like the US House of Representatives where they shoot each other. So if somebody makes mistakes, how do you guys correct them at a meeting politely? Anybody? Everybody do it? Okay, what you do is you rise to a point of order. So if Rob's the chair, you would rise to a point of order. Then Rob would say, state your point. As we voted on the roll call, we are not able to approve minutes of the meetings by any more than just a single meeting, because someone could be in favor of a single meeting, but an objection to another meeting that shows up. So when you do that, you might need to just have one meeting come up as far as the material. Now, if nobody objects to all of it, it's an informal way to do it, similar to the other informal things that come up. If everybody wants to vote and there's no objections, people sometimes will call question. And that's an informal question. If there's no objection to informal question, people go right to the vote. And that's used all over in our KDA. I've been to so many meetings where people call question. It's informal, it's not, you know, real proper. If you're looking for what it actually, the name of the, uh, motion actually is, you'll go down there, it's to call the previous question to come to the vote. And for a previous question, it's gotta have a second, it's not amendable, not debatable, and cause a two-thirds majority. Well, if nobody objects to it, so you know you're gonna have two-thirds majority. So those are things that come up at a meeting that are used pretty effectively. This chart's been updated. We'll continue to work on getting it updated if you guys want to actually go through. And is there any specific motion you guys want to ask the question on, anyone getting close to the end of my time? Dr. Fatch?
Okay, we lay a motion on the table, and it's tabled. When does that, that motion be taken off the table at the same meeting, or does it have to be...
It has to have a motion passed, you know, you have to do something else, then you can bring it up at the same meeting, or you can bring it up at the next meeting. If it's not brought up by the next meeting, it goes to meetings, you've killed the motion. If it's been tabled, it can only come up either during the meeting or it was tabled, or the following meeting.
And if it's put on the table, it should be on the agenda for the next meeting?
It should be on the agenda. That's the way it goes. That way they know they've been missing. And then you can actually reconsider some of the motions from the previous meeting. And that's one that's down below. If you look at reconsider, we do that an awful lot, because we make mistakes as far as in meetings, and we try to fix them. And that's a real key. Is, if there's anything else, otherwise I do have, um, this is probably the best part of it. This is the effect. And so each motion, what it's supposed to be used for, and then its effect at a meeting. For example, um, one that we were discussing, parliamentary inquiry. Now, if someone rises to a parliamentary inquiry, who do you guys handle the parliamentary inquiry more than?
Well, if we have an attorney here, it's typically the attorney.
The attorney is who you send it to, okay. Because normally what they'll say is that they'll have one person that'll work as far as for parliamentary inquiry, just to help you out, Rob. Because you're worried about running the meeting.
Right.
If you can find somebody to refer to, that's got a chart, that's got a way to look at the parliamentary inquiry, because a lot of times, um, you'll be at a meeting like this, it's a general assembly, and you might have somebody who's not a member of the council try to move a motion. Is that legal? No, and I've had many people ask it. Well, I want to move motion. Well, you gotta be a member of the council to be able to move motion. And I, I apologize, the fact that there's responsibilities that come with it, and there's privileges, you could actually conduct some of the business. Uh, with this sheet, this is probably explains the effect, basically telling you what each of them does. It's the same one you got on there. It says what it does, and basically gives you a chance how to do it. If you want to suppress a motion, remember it's object to the consideration of the question. And I've used that one many times. The worst thing you can basically do though, is try to control the meeting when it's supposed to be the entire group that would be controlling the meeting rather than just individuals. You have to be physically, in most constitutions, yes. If you were working, the question was, you have to be physically present to vote. In most groups, unless you would be giving a proxy, you have to be there at the meeting. You know, somebody will say, well, I wanna, I want you to cast my ballot, you're valid for me. Well, there's gotta be some form of proxy that they have available. And that would be as far as a proxy, that would be a, a formal, uh, individual where you've given them your full rights. And most organizations we have in the Constitution of ours do not allow for proxy. Corporations, or if you have, uh, stockholders' meetings, that's when you get a lot of people voting for proxy. That's a whole different situation if you've got proxy voting. Proxy voting if you're not there. And like with most of them, I recommend not to have, uh, because you don't know where the vote came from. And I can bring in a fake vote, or I can say, oh, I'm voting for these three other people. No, that's not legit. Robert's Rule of Orders would say that, but totally be out of order. Any other questions? If you guys are interested, we could bring the Harley Pro team in sometime, when you don't have us full of agenda tonight. I'm gonna try to make sure I got, uh, I'm 28 minutes in, I was given a 30-minute limit, so I'm gonna make sure I do. Any other questions for the two minutes? Anything that you guys are interested? If you need any more paperwork, uh, just track me down, I can get you everything on the Harley Pro going. Or if you ever just Google it, they have an online app now with Harley Pro that you can put on your cell phone. And if you're the chairman, it's a great habit to have, you go in, answer it, you've got it, give it to the person that's gonna act as your parliamentary, and that's really a great way to do it, Rob, because you've got enough to worry about up there. If you can have somebody else that's in charge of the, the meeting format, that you can send parliamentary inquiries at work, especially if you have a lawyer, that's probably the best thing. I, I've never had that privilege at a meeting, and if you've got some privileges here, to say the least. Any other questions at all? Go ahead.
What's the difference, like, you can table it to this meeting or table it to the next meeting, well, what, wouldn't that be the same as postponing?
Um, postponing, if you look at the effect as far as postponing, and let's see, where we got postponed, 26. With your postponed, uh, basically, you're gonna delay the action, uh, but you're trying to get it specific to a time and it doesn't kill it. As far as member of the table, if it doesn't come up in the next meeting, it's killed?
Unless you postpone indefinitely, number eight.
Yeah, number, yeah, if you postpone indefinitely, you're just trying to kill it. If you're postponing indefinitely. But if you table it, that kills it after the, the, the second meeting. Postpone to a certain time, you can set it for a time long existence.
We can set it for six months.
You can set it after we're done with the spring thaw, and we see if we have a flood in our KDA. I postpone, we talk about the maintenance as far as the streets till we see how the panels of blood. So that's how that use postpone to a certain time. And that works very, very well if you know something's coming up. If you don't think something's, you know, tabling it is, hey, whoa, way too fast, I don't know enough information. I'm gonna make sure my committee gets onto the information before the next meeting. Or if somebody comes in late and's got more information, that's the key. Additional questions? There's no pause for questions, group, feel free, it's just like I tell the kids, ask them now, because, uh, right now I might be thinking clearly of it, later I might not. If not, I appreciate your time, thank you, my 30 minutes is up, so we will receive to, uh, the next panel, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Weyler, love you, contact if we...
Yeah, if there's something else that comes up, the kids would probably love to get a chance to come and meet you guys, you guys are kind of celebrities, I've seen you on all kinds of websites and newspapers.
They'd probably teach us something.
They might ask Rod or ask so, Rod up in Silver River.
We'll just all get a new pen, we'll do that.
This is what you should do.
Yeah.
We'll move on to, um, 2B then. For Mayor Wright, White, and Sign Escrow Agreement, and for the city clerk, she opened an escrow account for White Lane, that's her. You two, you guys have got a packet. Do you have any questions on these? Bill, Bill created that packet?
Yeah, I can answer any questions. Basically, on November 5th, uh, earlier this year, the city council voted, uh, accept the street inspection of the White Lane extension and take in, uh, new subdivision. That was contingent on this escrow agreement being signed, and, uh, the street inspection, the street inspection did take place. Uh, it was conducted by David Engineering, uh, the State Superintendent, Raleigh Covenant and also the Water and Wastewater, um, Superintendent Gary Skor. And, um, there are no objections to it, or to bring this item back to the general so that the escrow agreement can be signed and then the city clerk can open the escrow account.
Motion by Mr. Conrad, second by Mr. Feltes. Any other discussion? Questions? Are you...
Who's the question?
They're even...
Lawyer, who's the question?
Yeah.
Who, who's the question? Use the board. I, I couldn't hear that.
The clerk will call it all.
Excuse me. Feltes?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Conran?
Yes.
Colston?
Yes.
Fatch?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2C, discussion of possible action to increase 2016 tax levy to include county special charge of $1,000. Angela, you could elaborate a little more on that?
Yes, you know, um, when we had the budget hearing, um, I had kind of forgotten that piece, and when we got, we get a county, we get a levy sheet from the school district, from the state and the county, and the VOTAC college, but, which lists out the, um, their levy amounts for the year. So when we send out the tax bill, we get the city portion, and then those portions from those other jurisdictions. The county has a special county charge that shows up on their levy, but we actually have to levy that with our taxes, um, instead of it showing up as a county charge. It, it's always been that way. Um, that was not, I forgot to bring that up at the budget hearing. Um, so we're just asking that, to collect that special charge and get that back to the county, that we increase the levy amount from 698 to 98 that was approved on the 17th to 699 to 98.
Motion.
Motion to include the extension to 216, 2016 tax levy to include the county special charge of $1,000 to bring a total of 699 to 98.
I second that motion.
I second that. Ms. Colston? Is there any other discussion? Hearing done, the clerk will call it all.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Colston?
Yes.
Conran?
Yeah.
Fatch?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Uh, item 2C, or excuse me, 2D, uh, discussion and possible action on vision, office copays and health reimbursement account. This also was discussed at previous meetings, I believe?
Well, yes and no. I just wanted to bring this up so a decision could be made on our health reimbursement account. Um, in the past, our, our health insurance included vision, um, and then the, in November, the city council approved to add vision as a, as a benefit to city employees. Um, in talking with our health insurance, we're switching health insurance January 1st, January 1st, um, vision exams, which were always preventative, will no longer be considered preventative. And so, um, it will be covered under having the vision insurance, but there is going to be a $10 vision copay per visit, um, for an eye, or preventative eye exam. And we just need a decision on whether the health reimbursement account will pay that $10, or if the employee will pay that $10 copay when they go in for their vision exam.
We pay, we really pay for that insurance, correct?
Uh, that, this, our health insurance is, yes, I mean, there's a cost share between the, the employee and, and the, um, and the city. On the vision insurance, the, the city is picking up the vision insurance, so there is not a, I guess, uh, there is not a charge for the employee for the vision.
Except the, if we chose to have a $10 copay versus us paying it?
Yeah, the $10 copay is there, and the, the council just needs to decide whether, you know, that's just a, a cost to the employee, or whether the health reimbursement account will pick that up.
And I think it says a max of, what, seven, could be a max of $750 for all employees?
You've got 75 people going for an exam.
But you have to realize, um...
Kids?
I'll make a motion that, that $10 be responsibility of the employees.
I second that.
There's a motion by Mr. Conrad, and a second by Ms. Colston. Is there any questions or objections to that? When you get the motion, that it would be the responsibility of the employee to pay the cop, make the copayment? Any discussion? Hearing done, the clerk will call it all.
Conran?
Yes.
Colston?
Yes.
Fatch?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Public comments. Give anybody from the public one minute. Speak now, forever hold your peace until the next meeting. Someone's got a timer? Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing done, we'll move forward. Number four, we are, you were forward with, uh, board and commission updates, there are non-department updates. Uh, we have Mr. Conrad from the street department.
Okay. I don't know who went through the bills this time around, but I wanted to just clarify something. We bought that new lawn tractor this fall, and you're gonna see a bill from Tractor Central in addition to that for 900 and some dollars. Let me explain. When we bought the new lawn tractor, there was two types of cabs, and I chose the cheaper one of the two cabs. Well, Rudy Suko, the mechanic company, and he said, you wanted that. Well, it was a 4,000, no, $3,400 difference. And I thought, if I come back and ask for a $3,400 cab, you'd be like, skeleton. So me and Rudy went to work and we looked at the cab that we currently have, that John Deere says won't fit on our tractor. Well, it fit. We had to buy a couple different brackets, so what we did is we kept our old cab. So you agreed to 11,600 and some back in August. The bill was 10,300, and then there was the additional 900 for the brackets and the labor. So ultimately, what we did is we spent $350 less. So I just, if, I thought maybe that close to $1,000 bill from John Deere on the brand new lawn tractor might throw that flight, so I just wanted to explain what happened there. So we ended up with a better cab, it's our old cab, but it's better than the new one they got. And it's not a $4,700 one, but a fully glassed new one, so.
It's good, anytime we can save money, the better.
And then, uh, just wanted to tell you guys, that leaf vacuum, we put $55 on that this fall. Very efficient in comparison to what we had. You know, but, we will never, I mean, barring something catastrophic, there's no reason that I should, I should be in Calvary Cemetery before that thing's worn off. And I plan on being here for a while. Uh, the River Street Pump Project that you agreed earlier this year, I'm guessing we're about two weeks away from that being operational. And I will run that this fall yet, so it's ready for spring thaw. And, just something I wanted to throw in there, the water, water department's currently using that truck that we bought, they're using it for flushing sanitary sewers, and they said that they're roasting stuff out of there that they've never touched before, so. I'm, I'm trying to promote this interdepartment sharing of equipment, so. And the dump box for that should be here possibly next week. Thank the good Lord, it hasn't snowed. Thank the good Lord, it hasn't snowed. And we're just doing, you know, painting stuff and trimming trees and that kind of stuff. You know, to pass the time until Mother Nature decides to give us that. And then the other thing I wanted to say is three and a half years ago, I came with a whole schedule of equipment replacement stuff. And the very first thing on that schedule was a salt truck. We've done a lot of stuff since then, but we haven't done that. So what I want to do is I'm going to put together some information because that's not something that you can throw together in two weeks, so. I'm going to put together some information and probably bring it to you guys for the next meeting for you to think about. Not saying we got to act on it, just so you've got it.
And what year is our salt truck?
An 86. We bought it new in 86, and we've had it for 30 years, so we're close to it, so.
A little rusty?
A little bit. And depending on which one we go, used, new, whatever, I'll bring all the options and, you know, different prices, pictures. You know, the ball will be in your court ultimately, but I just want to give you all the options and we can talk about how we want to proceed with that. You know, if you buy a new one, it's going to take you eight, nine months to put it together. Well, I shouldn't say that. Probably six, seven months. And a used one, the sooner I know if we want to pursue a used one, the more time I got until it snows next year to find the right thing, so.
So you're looking for a fall of 2016?
Right.
Something for a fall of 2016?
Could we put that on a, the salt sprayer on a, on a truck with a plow and a wing? And use it for every snowstorm plowing also?
Yeah.
We could do that.
We're still doing, doing it old school the way they used to. I've changed a lot of things, but that part I haven't. Main reason is, is that truck has a manual transmission. And if you ever plowed snow in town with a manual transmission, the next day you can't walk because your leg hurts. I still plow with the automatic, and then I switch trucks later in the day, but.
But you could do it both.
All familiar, my plan is to have that on the back of the truck that I'm plowing with. Take care of people killed, like the counties and the townsfolk.
What year is your, the truck you plow with?
97 model. Bought used. But short and sweet, ultimately, no matter which way we go, I'd like to get rid of two and replace it with one.
Makes sense.
So. One less thing that the batteries are dead on, you know.
Maintenance, oil, and gas?
Right.
Insurance?
Insurance.
Now, like since it's small, the insurance?
That's all I got, so.
You said something about the River Street Pump or something like that?
Yeah.
Is that the one that's by the, the, the new bridge on the other end by?
Yeah, if you notice over the last month or so, we built a concrete structure there.
Yeah.
There's now a 1,000 gallon per minute pump down that hole. And what that does is when the river comes up, there's a gate and a ground thing. We shut the gates, the water can't back up into the street. And then if it rains while that gate is shut while the river's high, we pump the water out, out of the street.
Out of the storage room.
Okay.
Same story as what's on this side, or on the, the same location on the other bridge, right by the Dodge dealer's side, and same as what is on Ashley Way. And there was three spots like that, and this is the third one, so we're taking care of. Used to be a guy would have to stay up all night and gas up, little gas engines and little pumps and 200, 150 gallon per minute, and trust me, three-four of them wasn't enough to handle it. But now this will be all automatic, so you won't have to worry about it overnight. You just turn the switch on and go.
So it pumps, pumps out into the river?
Yeah, there's a discharge. If you stop right at a bridge and look, there's a discharge pipe right there. So it'll be on bolts, it'll be automatic. The valve shut, the river's high, it rains overnight, pump kicks on when the level was down, shuts off. Life is good, everybody's smart. So.
You too.
Me too. Because all you do is lose the guys for the next day when that happens. You know. And let's face it, we got high water, we needed everybody. So.
Any other questions? Next department update is city clerk Angela Berg.
We've been fairly busy at city hall. We welcomed Aaron Richards to our staff last week. Aaron is from Winona and began working as full-time as our court clerk last week, November 30th. So if you come to city hall and see a new face, introduce yourself to Aaron. We are compiling the information to send to the county for the property tax bills. With the motion tonight on the, on the levy, that information will go to the county tomorrow. Should get the tax bills back later in the week, and residents should receive their Christmas present by the 15th of December.
Perfect.
I want to say a special thank you. We, when we started the election on the 24th, we were short-staffed in the morning, and I swore Eva Anderson in as a special deputy so that we could staff it because three was just not enough in the morning. We had over 500 voters that day, and I just want to say a special thank you to Judy Hesch, Mary Ryan, Janice Meek, Eva Anderson, Warren Knutson, Knutson and Carla Levitt for working the election that day and being very professional. You know, it was touch and go, just trying to get it all staffed and stuff, but it was a very long day. We tried to save money by not coding the Eagle, which is, you know, one of the machines that ballots go in and we hand counted ballots at the end of the night. We had over 500 voters for the election, and we didn't get out of here till after 10:30. And they did a marvelous job of just kind of keeping it together that day. Health insurance. We've been doing a lot of form collection at city hall with the switch over to health insurance in January. It's going to save the city some money and I hope provide better coverage to the employees. I think we're ready to go on that. One of the big projects that Bill's been helping me work on since he started was the codification of ordinances. We are ready, almost hopefully by the end of the year, to be able to send that back to general code so that hopefully by, in about, I would say, middle of next year, our ordinances will be online and be a little bit easier to, to access. So that's what's been going on in my department at city hall.
Any questions for Ms. Berg?
Just one thing. I was trying to access this on my computer, and I couldn't print it. I see you printed it though.
The bills?
Yeah, the bills. I couldn't, on mine, I couldn't. I got the, from Sally, I got the the email, but I, for some reason, I couldn't print that attachment. I don't know if it was just my computer or what.
Do you know if it was sent in the PDF or an Excel file?
I think it was sent as an Excel file.
Well, maybe it was sent in the PDF.
Oh, as an Excel, oh, maybe.
I think it was an Excel file.
Yeah, I can't print that Excel, I guess. What if I get Microsoft Tinder, what do you call it?
That's off the biophys, probably.
So that's the biophysics side?
But she, she, if she can just send it as a PDF.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that we do that next thing.
Okay, that'd be cool.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Berg? Public hearings, we have no public hearings scheduled for this evening. New business, discussion and possible action to extend consultant agreement with Green Alliance Holdings Corporation.
Yeah, I'll introduce this one. So in December of 2013, the city signed a consulting contract with Green Alliance Holding. The contract where the agreement was to provide assistance through the, the funding process for the former landfill and then start that development process with Green Alliance Wisconsin, which is a nonprofit that Green Alliance Holding created, especially for this project. The con, the initial contract was set to expire December of last year, was extended one more year. And therefore, that contract was to expire December 1st of this year. But since expired, Green Alliance is asking for an extension of that contract. If you look in your packet, there is a the contract and the amendment to it. Mr. Herzog is here in behalf of Green Alliance.
Mr. Herzog, would you like to just give a brief description of why you're looking at doing the extension? Just to bring everybody, most of the councils aware, but as well as the members of the public up to speed.
The original request was for an amendment, and it was placed between our attorneys and your attorney. And with the events that have taken place, that was at the end of August, in September and October, nothing was really done with it. At this point in time, without the support of the town to move forward, there's probably not a reason to continue with the way that it is.
Okay.
All right, plain and simple. I mean, I can go into more detail as far as what we had asked for amendment and so on. If you'd like to hear that.
Sure.
Okay. Not knowing what the EPA was going to require for applications and what was going to be available in 2016, we did not actually have a formal plan for the application process after the election change in the town in April. We were not in contact with them, nor are they in contact with us in regards to what to do next. Okay? So what we had proposed is one of the questions that came up at the joint meeting about a month ago was, what are we doing to earn our fees? Okay? And one of the comments that was made was that the city's paying to monitor our land. Okay? And what I wanted to clear up from that standpoint is the fact that whether we own the land or the city owns the land, or someone else were to come in and purchase the land, it would still be the city's obligation to do the monitoring in accordance with the DNR and EPA protocol. All right? The only way we're going to get by that is to do an assessment to determine the extent of contamination or to define what's called the plume of contamination moving forward. And in our proposal with the attorneys, we had suggested if we were not successful in the 2016 grant application, that we would forward 50% of that cost, and we would ask the city to forward 50% of the cost to identify the plume. With the intent of going either to the state or to the EPA in the future to either get a loan or to receive grant money to cover those expenses. With that being said, we were, we were willing to post up to $200,000 for that assessment. Now, we're only talking about within the parameters of the 40 acres deemed landfill. Nothing would be going offsite. The difficulty with that is, it was expressed to the attorneys, is that if the contamination is offsite, there has to be a method of moving forward because the assessment was already started. We're not sure that the EPA would allow us to stop at that point in time. We're also not sure what the cost would be for that because we don't know where it is. Okay, so it's kind of an open-ended question at this point in time. So if the city were willing to put up to $200,000, then we would be willing to put up to $200,000 to start that process with reimbursement for both parties, either through future grant or revolving loan fund. I don't believe that any of that was brought before the council before, that that was what our proposal was within the attorney group.
You talked to the city attorney?
Our attorneys did, yes.
That's the first I've heard of that, so.
That's why I'm bringing them up, because the question is, is do we proceed with what we have? And our response is no. That would not be prudent use of funds.
Did Colin Rickett know this? Your attorney?
No, specifically, no.
I mean, not specifically?
Well, sorry, the communication between your lawyer and the city's lawyer, no.
I mean, so for us, at this point, my feeling is for us to extend a consultant agreement is not wise on either one's part, I guess, right?
That's correct. Until when?
Well, I don't think it would be a consultation agreement. I think it'd be some sort of other agreement if we decide to go down that road in the future.
Would it mean a difference if the town of Rickete would have cooperated?
Yes.
Could you elaborate on that, please?
Sure, we would have moved forward with grant application to the EPA for the revolving loan fund for 2016. And as we shared in the public meeting, we would have started the assessment prior to knowing what the outcome would have been.
Would you repeat that last statement, please?
Sure. Whether we received the loan or not, we would have started the assessment process.
And who would have been paying for that?
We would have.
Even if the grant was not granted?
We would have started the process, yes. So we would, we would have known what the perimeter exposure was.
So like last year when they, when the town applied for the grant, why would, why wouldn't we have done the same thing at that point?
We didn't know the results or the potential.
But you wouldn't have known the results this year either, or you would have started.
But we didn't have any budget for, for last year. We had budgeted for 2016.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
Angelo, went to Angelo and then back here. How much has the city paid Green Alliance at this point?
I'd have to double check because I don't have those numbers. I could guess, Marla, but I'm not going to.
Do you have an idea of the surrender?
For 2015?
Yeah. Because we've been on a contract of 14 and 15, correct?
Correct. I believe last year was $19,000 or $18,000, and I believe this year was slightly less than that so far. I think there's still a bill pending?
Yes, it's on our bills to approve that, it was for $3,000. I have to look again. So then my question to you is, for what the city has paid you, what have you done in return for the city and for the landfill problem?
Well, we've worked by going out to the site a couple times this year, notifying Kimmel, when he was mayor, that there were some difficulties with some of the wells. We've talked continuously with the EPA. We've been to meetings with the EPA, both telephone and in person. So that's what we've been doing. We have not met with the DNR this year. We have spoken with Davey Engineering also several times.
Mr. Conrad?
If, if this contract would end because of non-renewal, what would we be looking at owing Green Alliance?
I don't know what that number is. We'd have to go back and check. Nothing for moving forward. It would all be in arrears and it would not be part of It would all be in arrears and it would not be part of the consulting agreement but the redevelopment agreement.
60, 70, 80,000? What?
I believe last year, we extended 38,000 plus maybe another four or five beyond that for 2014, and probably 16 or 17,000 this year.
I just want to add that the development agreement does state that the amount that the city would owe would not surpass 84,000 dollars.
So we would be below that. Yes.
Mr. Feltes.
So if the town been out of the picture to file for the application, can the county file?
The county could file, yes. However, we're not prepared for that for this year.
No, it'll be for...
For 2016.
Be 17 then, before...
We'd have to go to 2017.
If we don't renew this contract, does the landfill come back to the city after the end of the year?
I believe the contract calls for it to be returned to you if we don't start the investigation in June.
What happens if you start the investigation?
Then it continues. The contract should continue the development.
But you won't start the investigation without a renewal of contract?
I didn't say anything to that. We need to have some front-end agreement in place, so yes.
Just so everyone is clear here, there are two different agreements. One is the consulting agreement, which we're talking about tonight, and the second one is the development agreement, which takes the property from the grant phase into the actual development phase. Now, the developers' agreement does state that, you know, at any time during, and I quote, "various phases of the project," as here and after described, developers unable to proceed with the project due to lack of brownfield designation, lack of sufficient grant funding, or other causes reasonably beyond the control of the developer. And upon the city's request, the developer shall know later than 30 days after notice from the city reconvene the merchantable title to the property to the city where it stands in need for no consideration and free interference of all deans and encumbrances against property arising after the date of this agreement.
The only thing we can vote on tonight, or we can vote on tonight, is that extending the consulting agreement.
Correct, because that's...
Which Mr. Herzog has recommended not extend.
So, and just putting us to a hypothetical here, if the consulting agreement does not, is not extended, and if the city council, you know, wishes to ask for the property back, the city council would be able to do so in writing, therefore starting that process.
How long will we postpone this till a time that the mayor and administrator assistant feels it's necessary to have back on the agenda?
There's a motion on the floor, Minister Conroy, seconded by Mr. Feltes. Angelo, did you get that?
That seems, can we make such a vague just...
Well, it would almost be like postponing it indefinitely until Bill and I decide we have enough information to place it back.
But I don't want to say indefinitely in case we do want to.
Well, indefinitely, you can still put a date on it at a later day.
So do you want the most...
We'll do it at the county that way.
You want the motion to state that you're postponing it to a future agenda once you have acquired the...
Proper research.
Is there any questions in regards to that?
I just got a comment. What happens if we don't do anything? We're gonna perhaps get the land back, and then we still have hazardous waste out there, right?
Well, hazardous waste is our responsibility, no matter who owns it.
Right.
Right, so it's still there to be...
It's not really, isn't this up here, unfortunately?
So it's still there somehow or another, and we're gonna have to deal with it, so the purpose of this postponing is so we get more information, so we can move forward to get the job done, basically.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the postponing is to see if there are any other options out there as far as possible funding. Maybe take a look at, you know, what our choices are as far as remediation, whether plasma is the way to go, the best way to go, or whether it'd be some other take. So I think simply at this time when, you know, where we are in the application process is all being expired, or intent to apply has passed, and having no options at this time, we should take this opportunity to learn more about what our options are.
Does some of these options involve our people from the town too, so that we can...
Of course.
I think it should involve all of us, yes. Mr. Shaw?
If I may, just, just so the council understands, the town is a likely responsible party, which is why the application failed last year, which is why...
That is not correct. The application did not fail because of that. The application failed because they didn't have enough money to go around. There was no failure in the application. It was funding.
Well, I was, yeah, sorry, I was interrupted, but what's in the papers fairly accurate with what I communicated with EPA? A few questions and some of the third?
Maybe it's something that in the future we'll have to get together again with the town of Arcadia and discuss all the options.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a possibility. You gotta work together.
I have a couple of questions. So if we postpone this, does that still give us some obligation to Green Alliance, or...
Well, by, by, the consulting contract or the consulting agreement with Green Alliance has expired.
Has expired.
Correct. As of December 1st, 2015.
Right.
Now, our obligation for the consulting contract, if we postpone this, there won't be a consulting agreement. We won't have any obligation there.
Okay.
However, the developers' agreement is still valid. So, and we had talked about this earlier regarding the amount of money that would be owed for the arrears to Green Alliance. What that number is, we don't know then at this point, but that would be the obligation unless in a future meeting we move to terminate that agreement also.
So that's something we need to look into also?
Correct.
So would there, just a question about the motion. You made that, right? You know, should it be to postpone, or should it just be to stop, you know, not renew the agreement?
Maybe we shouldn't, actually, we may not even need a motion at all if there's no agreement. We don't really have to take any action at all. Because the agreement has already passed.
Correct.
It's void.
So you need to rescind that?
Yeah, you can rescind that, because really, we wouldn't need to. Because there's no agreement in place right now, other than the developers' agreement. Correct?
That's correct. So we just have...
So if you would rescind that, it goes...
It's got to be voided on first date. That's what I mean about getting too sophisticated with your...
Hey, this was placed on the agenda before I was the mayor.
No, no, I don't... I, I, I rescind my motion.
I'm gonna rescind in a second.
It's just maybe less formal, is what those statements was.
We haven't adopted it yet.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there's nothing to adopt.
There was no amendment, so you can rescind it.
That's right. Yeah, we don't follow Robert's rules or whatever, so. We'll move on to number eight B, then, discussion of ordinance 105 relating to hours of sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors and possible authorization of Gossner Cosmo and Brubel to prepare ordinance 105 amendments. This is also listed in your packet. I've got a couple of calls in regards to this. I don't know if anybody else did, some from retailers as well as a wholesaler. And Bill can maybe, Mr. Angelo?
Angelo's gonna take the phone.
You know, this actually came up earlier in the summer when we were looking at codification of the ordinances. Currently, city's ordinance 105 related to the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors is a little bit more restrictive than state law. The state law now allows for sale between the hours of, or restricts it between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. State law restricts it between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And, you know, the couple of people that I have talked to, you know, just would like the more, less restrictive, they would like to be able to start selling at 6:00 AM, and, you know, that's a competitive when some of the other municipalities around us, you know, sell earlier. And they were just hoping that the council would consider that.
Most other municipalities are, are just in line with the state ordinance?
Yes.
I would... Is it off sale? Yeah.
This would be off sale.
Like your store.
Like if you're going on a quick trip at 7:30.
But a tavern could sell a full packet at that time also, right? See, they rule them different. Yeah, or...
Angela probably would be better to answer that.
I haven't done that recently.
Because it's a combination license they have, right?
It is a combination.
Yeah. I would say that's correct. Please, someone's in Las Vegas, just crack one on your...
Honored, date a motion to approve. To fall in line with the state statute.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Fetsch, seconded by Mr. Feltes. Discussion?
I've had a comment, Mr. Mayor, of people, you know, when they get off work over here, you know, the 24/7 type thing, they want to go to the grocery store and buy items, and, you know, they're at 6:05 in the morning when they get off, and they're complaining that they couldn't get it, so I guess this would kind of take care of that type of thing.
Yes.
I agree.
And then the business will notify that the hours have changed?
How would you notify the businesses?
Well, what you guys are doing tonight is if you're in agreement that we should be in with state statute, then we'd have the attorneys do the amendment to ordinance 105 and bring that back for approval, because you don't have the ordinance amendment in front of you. Once you approve it and it's published, it kind of takes effect upon publication. So once it's published, or the week that it would get published, we would send out a letter to all the retailers, letting them know.
Would there have to be a public hearing in regards to this, too?
It's not like your license hearing, it's an ordinance change.
But you don't need a public hearing for an ordinance change?
We haven't, we haven't had.
Okay. So it'd be a little while before it would take effect in there?
Well, you know, if the attorney's office, I mean, if they brought it back, see, on the 21st, and you guys, you know, pass the ordinance that night, then it would, you know, it would get published in the paper the following Thursday, and then, you know, it could, it could take effect, you know, by the first of January. It kind of depends on...
That's gonna be, that would be a nice line, the first of January, effective the first of January.
Well, don't hold me on that.
I'm just, no, I'm just saying, I mean, that gives everybody a nice cut and dry line, the first of the year, it's changed.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call it all.
Coulson, yes.
Yes.
Feltes?
Yes.
Consala?
Yes.
Conroy?
Yes.
Motion case. Item C, discussion and approval of resolution 120715-01, resolution providing for sale of $600,000 electric system revenue bond anticipation note, series 2016A, catalytic converter project to meet EPA standards.
So I'll try to explain this one as I can. Essentially, what's happening is that the electric utility is running up against a deadline to meet the EPA standards. Currently, the engines are allowed or need to meet a certain capacity hour of production, and because of the new EPA standards, they're not able to meet that. Now, they've been doing that by purchasing generation, generator hours. And a current court decision stated that they would not, they would no longer be able to use those hours. So in order to meet that capacity, the electric utility needs to purchase these catalytic converters so that they would meet the EPA standards. If that makes any sense. So Tim did go out for a bid on these, I believe, and the total amount came approximately $600,000. We talked with Lers, and as anticipation note, this would not count against the city's general obligation bond capacity. Now, the city council does need to approve this because it is the body to make these types of decisions to borrow. The electric utility did approve recommendation to the city council.
Are, what's the cost? This is for the cost of the equipment, how about for the installation? I'm guessing that the building's gotta be changed, these things, these catalytic converters gotta be huge.
I would, I had thought that this was part of the muffleration too, right?
That's the total cost.
Oh, just, it goes in place of where the old muffler was?
Yeah. Yeah, it bolt, it's a bolt-on.
Yeah. The muffler itself has catalyst in it? We build those.
Are you building?
I don't know about this project, but we build those up there where the catalyst is inside the muffler. So for something that, there's probably a series of them, you know, and probably a 42-inch muffler.
Well, for 600,000, yeah, we think there is, yeah.
They're very expensive.
Buy a catalyst one.
All right, you answer my question.
Yeah, but I believe the total amount is, is including...
Installation and everything.
Correct.
Yeah, the total amount here says 600.
The total amount, if you look in the Lers' pre-sale report, should be in there. Yeah, it looks like it is.
Now, this resolution authorizes Lers to go out and solicit bids, and in the past, the last time that we did a bond anticipation note for the electric utility, we set it up kind of like a line of credit, so as the pay requests come in and we have to pay the bills, we would draw it down on that account. It was, we did it over like a five-year period, and there was no penalty for prepayment, and we ended up paying that loan off two years early. You know, the goal would be that, you know, what the revenues of the electric utility is this time would allow to try to be a little more aggressive on paying this back, but this would allow for a five-year payback. And the utility commission, like Bill said, has, you know, they've gone through this, they've talked about it, they approved the contract, and they're recommending that the council, you know, solicit that they would come back in January. And in the, in the last time that we did this, we solicited the bank, the local banks in Arcadia, and Bankers Bank through the state bank of Arcadia got that bid. One of the questions Lers asked, and they wanted me to bring that forward tonight in discussion, is do you want... in, in discussion is, do you want them to bid just the local base in the city of Arcadia? Do you want them to bid the base, you know, like the local base in, in like the Trumplo County? You know, how far out do you want them to, to bid this?
I would say any that are, are electricity.
So, the, the local ones?
You wouldn't like any more than that, and make, make it a better rate?
I, I don't understand, why didn't they just borrow this from the, from the water utility?
They don't have as much baby anymore.
Well.
They should reach out their normal radius that they do, you know, like Banker Bank and the other banks.
You mean, in terms of borrowing from the sewer utility, it would be the one that they would borrow from Fritz? I, I don't think that was ever discussed.
Um, Angela, what are we paying this company for getting the bids? Is that part of their general cost?
Um, that's usually built right in.
Okay.
Into the.
Yeah, that, no, what we're paying, tell me.
Right.
I'm, I'm just wondering, can I pay out more to them to?
Well, the cost of issuance is twelve thousand five hundred dollars on exhibit one.
Okay, so that should take care of that. That should include that again.
Yes, that's part of the overall project.
So, it was never discussed that the utility to, to borrow from within, within the utility commission? That they could borrow this or pay for it out of their funds? Instead of paying six hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars in interest?
I don't think so.
No? That's a possibility, right?
Maybe we'll back to that committee?
You could send it back to that committee, correct?
The only promise is that gonna?
Delayed out.
Not only delay it, but is it gonna strap the utilities for cash? Your water and sewer needed?
And they're just.
I, I mean, I, this is, I mean, this is no different than when you did, uh.
Correct.
Borrowed one of the one in six million from.
Just to keep in mind, there is a, a deadline to meet the EPA standards of May first of August.
If you guys would like to send it back to the utility commission for, for consideration, you know, we haven't even got, they're under contract to do it, so we're gonna have to come up with the funding, whether we borrow it this way or there's another inter-fund loan. Um, I, I think that, yeah, a few weeks isn't gonna make, you know.
Well, yeah, if we have to have a special meeting to get it done, we gotta do it. You know, before the, well, we ain't having it on the Monday of after Christmas, are we having it?
We're having the Monday before Christmas?
What's the feeling on that side?
What, what did I forget?
Well, I think I'd like to give this, uh, hear some more information, if that'd be possible to do inter, uh, intergovernmental or inter, inter, inter-fund type of thing, at least. What about, can we have information by next, our next meeting, which is on the twenty-first or twenty?
Yes.
That's just two, that's two weeks, I would think maybe they can test it and.
Well, and maybe, and maybe they could come back with maybe not the full amount, but some alone.
Yeah, well, you can get a, a new tip if they're saying.
Right.
Whatever works for everybody.
Well, I would like to see it go back to the committee to consider getting some, something between departments. Just see what the possibility is.
But maybe there's something we don't know, you know?
Well.
Yeah.
That.
Well, if Bob was here, he probably could tell us. You know, he's our utility rep.
When does the utility commission meet next?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning. I, I mean, this is not on the agenda, but we could touch base with them. Um, I think then their next meeting is like January fourth or fifth, so.
Well, they'd have to have a special meeting.
They'd have to have a special meeting.
We need a mo, you guys wanna have a motion to send it back to the utility commission then?
I made a motion that we send this back to the utility commission for them to see the possibility of.
Then, them contributing?
Right, I'm not really sure how to word it.
Inter-governmental law?
Yeah.
Inter-fund law?
Inter-fund law. Second.
Motion by Ms. Colston, second by Mr. Fetch, to send back to the utility commission to see if we can do an inter-fund law?
Whatever the correct wording is on.
Okay, between the, the sewer and the.
Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Fetch?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yep.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Conrad?
Yes.
Colston, yes.
Uh, item D, operator licenses.
Is that your minutes of J. K.?
I think there was three of them. Ronald Benusa, Danica Paps, and Brandon McNallyn.
Also move pending background.
That's all done.
Motion by Mr. Feltes?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Fetch. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Feltes?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Conrad?
Yeah.
Colston?
Yes.
Fetch?
Yes.
Approval of bills of general accounts. Motion by Mr. Feltes?
Second.
Second by Mr. Conrad. Any discussion or questions?
No, we're all looking at, now, instead of the east, the west side of events, but I didn't get the chat.
We're all east.
We're all east. We're west of the track, so.
Earlier, we had discussed the, the, the bill for Green Alliance.
Yep.
Um, do we need to have more discussion on that or is that for services that have been rendered? I, I don't know, that just came up earlier, so.
Oh, here it is, it's Green Alliance Holding Corporation, three thousand dollars consulting service for September and October. And when did that run out?
December.
First.
So, there could be a little bit for November, yeah.
Part of the contract, right?
Well, we have to pay this, right, cause it's part of the contract.
That'd be my understanding. Bill, would that be same as your understanding?
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that we reveal the contract, make sure that we're good. You know, the amount, I don't know what the total amount is at this time, but I mean, the overall, overall amount, because the, the contract stays now over eight four, which Mr. H, Herzog doesn't believe that, that the total amount is at this point.
No, this is the consulting.
Oh, this is for the consulting agreement.
You have something else, Angela?
No, that came up in conversation on Friday. Do you remember that, Rob?
Right, but I think that was only gonna be if the, you know, maybe if we did extend it or, you know, we didn't, we didn't do any extension and we took no action, so, I mean, if these are services that were performed.
Yeah.
Previous, previous month, I think we were more concerned of if there was any, anything that happened in December or moving forward, to then pass that contract, to involve us to another year.
Okay.
I think we're up to discussion, Ross? Am I correct in that, Bill?
Well, I think what the conversation was with designing the consulting period and the amount of, the amount of dollars for that cons, that consulting period, and we needed an attorney to interpret what that consulting period was.
So, you, so would you just like to hold payment on that, is what you're thinking?
Yeah, at this point, until we get a response from the attorney.
Okay. Yeah, so I just needed an amendment to the motion? Anybody can make that amendment?
All you do is make an amendment?
Make the amendment.
To hold the payment, uh, whatever the grant was.
Three thousand?
Three thousand dollars to Green Alliance, and then you can just say pending, uh.
Pending.
From the, uh, from the lawyers.
From, uh.
Council, yeah.
Yep.
There's an amendment?
Yes.
In a second? To the amendment?
That's fine.
And a second by Mr. Feltes? We'll vote on the motion to approve the bills of general counts. Excuse me. We'll vote on the amendment, thanks, Mr. Fetch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval of bills of general count as amended?
So moved.
There's already a motion, so we can just call it. Angela, you can call the question or call the roll.
So, do we not, bear with me, do we not need a separate motion?
He made a motion to amend, which amended the, the paying of the bills of general count minus Green Alliance for three thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that was voted.
Okay.
But it was just a voice vote.
So, we don't need a separate motion, we just need a vote?
Right, because it's just amending bills as amended, minus the payment.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Conrad?
Yeah.
Colston?
Yes.
Fetch?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Now, item F, appointment of election inspectors for two thousand sixteen seventeen cycle.
Yes, this last election, it just kinda showed how important it is to have, um, some alternate members, just in case someone is unable to serve for a variety of reasons. Um, I'm asking for Chief Inspector Judy Hesch, alternative Chief Inspector Sally Silla, Jane Sondalbach, Janice Smitsick, Carla Levitt, Mary Ryan, Warren Knutson, Theresa Metelski, Eva Anderson, Barbara Costner, and a new name that I talked to after this went to print was Ant, Antoinette Johnson. Just to have a, a larger pool to, to choose from.
Is there any restrictions on how active somebody was in the race to be an election inspector?
No. Active in, in what race?
E, E race.
No, if, I mean, if there's a, if there's a conflict of interest or if, you know, if one of the election inspectors, you know, if Judy Hesch is running for office, um, she obviously wouldn't, you know, she wouldn't be serving in that capacity for that.
Say somebody circulated a recall petition, can they still be an election inspector?
Yes, I believe they can be an election inspector, they just wouldn't serve in that election.
Okay.
I guess it would kind of be just almost like Judy being, being your voting for her husband could, could be almost more of a conflict of interest. I get what you're saying.
I just would rather clear it up here tonight than down the road and have an issue. I have to have a whole new election because of it or something.
No, trust me, I was on the, I was on the phone with the Government Accountability Board quite a bit in the last four weeks, so I, I think we did it correctly.
That?
This, that question came up at the town of Arcadia election last April and, um, our attorney from, Mr. Robold, had a meeting with the chief election inspector and had called me on the phone as long, because we had that same situation, and as long as your election inspector is not talking about, you know, the issue of sand mines or candidates, they are allowed to work at that election.
Okay.
And that's the advice that we work in a way like that.
And we could maybe touch on that, on the, at a as-needed basis too.
Right, you know, in the last ele, election, um, we were short-staffed and Eva, Eva took her oath of ele, election office and she filled that need. Um, I called the Government Accountability Board that morning and they said, yes, in an emergency, we can, we can appoint someone. Um, this gives us, I think, a big enough pool, um, you know, and I, um.
Just don't wanna have an issue, so. And all the conventions will be called a Q.
That's what they say, I guess. I'll entertain a motion to approve the list.
I will make a motion to approve candidates for appointment of election inspectors for the two thousand sixteen seventeen election cycle in the city of Arcadia. Do I have to name them or?
Yes, please.
Uh, candidate names Judy Hesch, Chief Inspector, Sally Silla, Chief Inspector, alternate, James Sondalbach, Janice Smitsick, Carla Levitt, Mary Ryan, Warren Knutson, Theresa Metelski, Eva Anderson, Barbara Costner, and Tony Johnson.
I'll second it, but I'm not reading the list.
Second, uh, motion by Mr. Fetch, second by Mr. Conrad. Discussion?
I, I'm just questioning, are we able to vote for, um, Tony Johnson since her name wasn't on the agenda, or do we need to move that for the next?
This wasn't on the agenda, this is just a summary of what's gonna be discussed.
Okay.
The agenda is just to authorize appointment of election inspectors.
Including Tony Johnson.
Including Tony Johnson.
Who matters?
Yep. Antoinette? Antoinette? Clerk will call the roll.
There's a little A on there.
And a little A.
Conrad?
Yes.
Colston?
Yes.
Fetch?
Yeah.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Item G, authorization for Johnson Block to perform city's aud, two thousand fifteen audit. Mrs. Berg?
Oh. Um, Johnson Block has been doing the city's audit for the last, um, as long as I've been with the city and prior to that, they're, they're under new ownership. You know, the Tiff district's coming to an end, um, it's nice that they have that history. We did a request for services about four or five years ago to bid it out and they came back and the city stayed with them. Um, they had competitive pricing and, um, I guess you guys have in your council packet the letter from Johnson Block, um, that we need confirmation from the council to authorize them to perform the city annual audit.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize Johnson Block to defund cities. Motion by Mr. Feltes? Is there a second?
Sure.
Mr. Fetch? Any discussion or questions?
Just related each and our. Block?
Good questions, I doubt it. Clerk will call the roll.
Colston, yes.
Yeah.
Feltes?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Conrad?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item H, discussion on possible change of meeting start time. Um, I would like to, personally, I'd like to change it to five or five-thirty. I think seven o'clock is a little late, in, in my opinion. What's the feeling of the council, does anybody have it?
Well, for me, for me, I would say five-thirty would be the earliest, because if we end up with the Housing and Building Standards Committee meeting at four, we sometimes don't get done until after five.
Okay.
Maybe six would be even more better.
The reason I, I did it is, there are a lot of us that are busy, both travels quite away and attends a lot of meetings, um, and by nine or ten o'clock, people are sick of it, I'm in a meeting at home.
Just, just on Dan's point, the Housing and Building Standards Committee meets on a Tuesday? And the city council will be on Monday?
Well.
I, I would also like to just keep the meetings to place. I, I would also like to just keep the meetings to place a month. And I'll discuss more on the agendas later in the meeting, but when I want agenda items turned in.
Want the same date, to our same day?
Yeah, like the first and third works.
Of, of Monday?
Right, 'cause that's opposite the, the Friday party.
And the town.
And the town. And the county. It actually interferes with the counties, the third.
Keep in mind, that seems to be like we're getting more and more of the public to attend the meetings. And if you make them a little too early and they're not able to attend, you take that away and I don't think you wanna discourage them, but.
I'd agree with that.
I, I'd echo that, we, as a town board, I think we prefer to meet earlier, though we largely felt seven o'clock calls people to finish their work day, do their basic family issues and, um, so it's, it's a tough balance. Both considerations are pretty important.
Yeah.
Do you think six-thirty would accommodate, um, people or do you think the old at seven is better?
I don't know, we did back in Green Bay by that time. No, I, I'm not personally myself, because everyone knows I work under roads. I mean, I'm, the only reason I'm at this meeting is because I'm currently laid off, but, uh, I'm just generally thinking that, you know, people, five o'clock, six o'clock to get off work, by the time you go home, change clothes, pull something or nothing, eat, wanna get to a meeting. You know, again, the big thing is you don't wanna discourage, you know, it, it's a good thing that we're getting the public more involved now and you don't wanna discourage that. And I think if you don't make the time available to them, that's what's gonna happen. I know it's a.
No, that's a great point.
Like John said, it's a balance, I mean, it, it's a balance, you know, you don't want people staying up till eleven o'clock, but I think, I think you, uh, you can kinda control that, don't put thirty items on the, you know.
Right.
So, I think we, you know, oh, I think we can work that out, that.
Right, but if you don't have thirty items, you ain't gonna do it in two, two meetings, what?
Well, I guess.
I mean, we're gonna work.
Well, I mean, yes, you're, and you're right there, too, I mean, I understand that. So, um, I guess, uh, again, my big thing, don't, you know, just let's not discourage the public from, from, I think it's, uh, I think we need the public to be here, I guess.
They don't vote.
So, do we want, so do we wanna leave it at seven then, for the time being, or do we wanna move it up a half hour or an hour?
I'd rather move it up an hour.
Well, I, you know, a person could try six o'clock and if the public.
We can always change it.
Participation goes down, we can always move it back.
We can always change it, but I'd like to, something to start to be, you know, consistent and be a little earlier.
How about six-thirty?
Yes, six-thirty.
I'd go for six-thirty.
Try that and see how it works out.
Oh, quarter to seven.
Six, we, we, we don't need a, we don't need a motion or anything, it's just, it's a discussion and we'll just set all of them at six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Yep. Yep. I do that, I guess they do. And we'll move on to number nine, closed session, so I'll entertain a motion, move into closed session. Don't move. Motion by Mr. Feltes, seconded by Ms. Colston. Move into closed session per Wisconsin statutes, section nineteen point eighty-five, parentheses one, see to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body, governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, city hall, and municipal court staffing, and part-time officer wages. Clerk will call at all.
Conrad.
Yep.
Colston.